Any more comments, corrections on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes for the Finance Committee meeting Thursday, November 27th. So.
Seconded.
Any comments, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Payable awards, 1017, 1019. So.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any questions on the payable awards? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And finally, vendor awards, 1018 and 1020.
So. Seconded.
Seconded. Any questions on the awards at all? If you see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you should have in your drop box a copy of the cash flow, revenue, expense, and the trade group report. Committee reports, Finance Committee.
Okay. Been on the 27th. And let me get my. And went over the fiscal year of 2025 budget. And went to.
You need one for this?
What's that? Yeah, yeah. I thought I had mine here. There it is. No, I got it. I'm good. Thank you. I moved here somewhere. Okay, just to put it because the people are watching, so I'll reach from the minutes itself. Showing participating schools in the Southwest Tech District. Description of Southwest Tech programs, pre-tech classes, certification courses, and online classes. Three key factors in fiscal year 2025 budget. Tech budget history, the budget options would look at 24 approved budget. Fiscal year 25 budget estimated six semester average FTE calculation. Fiscal year 25 budget proposed announced tuition using option two. And eight announced, number eight, announced tuition breakdown. And questions, discussion fiscal year proposed budget amount and proposed tuition and next steps. And tonight we'll be putting the budget that we had our meeting today and finance meeting to the full board for approval. And I will probably have, I don't know if it's time what Rebecca did that or not. Okay, so like you said, give it over to you, Rebecca? Done now?
Now.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you're right.
Good thing it's right.
Yeah.
Policy committee?
Yes, Policy Committee met last month. We had some productive discussion regarding three different policies that we wanted to review and update. Some of it was regarding wording, some of it was regarding other edits that needs to be made. Furthermore, we have essentially with the edits pushed along policies to the full board. So that way we can vote on them. Essentially allow us to continue our work and move forward to other policies in January. I don't know if any of you have any questions regarding any of these policies. Although in your packets, you should have at the bottom another copy of the minutes along with the policies that we reviewed.
Today we're going to warn them so that we have any comments, if people are watching want to talk about sexual harassment or the grievance procedure or the conflict of interest, they can get in touch with the school board member or come to the next meeting and make comments.
I would welcome any and or all comments. I feel like we did a good job in reviewing and editing each of these policies. That way we can make more than today.
So, Asher.
Yes.
So are the updates that you made because I presume that most of these are updated?
Most of it were just mild edits regarding things like, you know, one of them mentioned the CDC or SBSU changing that to the Southwest Tech. Other things were, I think, under conflict of interest in hiring. We had some conversation regarding how to word it, you know, we want to change this or that. One of them, I think it was sexual harassment. Up the top here for any employee or student, it said boy or girl, you remove that. So that way it reflects more neutral and dare I say inclusive language. Any employee or student, this means any employer or student regardless of, you know, what's going on. So small things like that have been changed. Make sure we're reading the policy minutes myself to see if we did anything else that was noteworthy. No, I mean, we just, we, we had in-depth discussions regarding each of them. So we didn't make any large changes, in other words, to any policies. Just minor edits and updates naturally. We want to make sure that we're reviewing them that way. We can say especially for these important policies, having these board looked at them and that they're still relevant and up to date. And that way we can warn them today and move on in January. We would have met today although one of our members is not here today. So I decided to start fresh in January. Thank you, Jen. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Well.
Okay, now we have action items, the 2025 budget. Can you give us a quick rundown?
Yes, and I'm going to ask Superintendent Hall to share on the screen. I know noting there is any public in the audience, but CAT TV is there. So I want to go through the presentation. So if somebody were to look at the meeting online after, they have the information to support what we're bringing to this board today. So the Southwest Vermont Tech School District is proposing the FY 2025 budget. The information we're going to talk about now. To start with as a reminder, these are some of the sending schools that participate at Southwest Tech. You can see here Long Trail, Housit Falls, Arlington, and Burn Burton. And of course, Mount Anthony, which we are connected to, are some of our sending schools that spend their days here with us part of the time and at their homeschool the other half of their day. So when we're talking about the FY 2025 budget, we're talking about students that we serve from all of these schools in our district, not just one particular school. For those who are trying to learn more about who we are, on this slide kind of gives you a little bit of informational breakdown. We currently this year provide 14 daytime technical programs that are two and three-year technical programs. And you can see the list from accounting, manufacturing, which includes welding component, law enforcement, human services, pre-law, medical. I mean, basically 14 different pathways that students have an opportunity to pursue and learn about what they want to do. Once they leave high school, whether it be college or career, right out to the technical center, they give some kind of a jump start with these 14 programs. We offer 16 currently daytime pre-tech foundation classes, which are introductory classes to these different types of technical programs. And again, just about every one of our, well, actually every one of our programs offers a pre-tech or possibly two different pre-tech foundation classes, one in the fall, one in the spring. Some programs offer once and offer two to introduce students to their technical programs. We also offer workforce certification courses. And you can see a list here. These are for adults and high school students that may choose to participate in these certification courses that take place outside of the normal school day. So you can see advanced manufacturing, CBL, culinary, dental assisting. We have numbers students in the past who have been students in our med profession class during the day and taken the LNA program in the evening. We have students in our manufacturing that come back and do the welding component that's offered. So there are students who have now, a new one has stepped up to childcare that's, that they're looking at starting and running. And we have students in human services that are kind of intrigued by what that's all about. So a lot of these workforce certification courses are further studies in areas that our students may currently be in. And for adults in the area that may want to retrain and have an interest in learning more about or getting endorsements in areas like CBL or dental assisting, it's a new career change. We also offer a conjunction or partnership of ed skills. Over 735 online workforce and adult head training classes. And those you hear around, those are available both now when the school's in session and during the summers. These are programs, some are meeting week to week virtually. Some are at their own pace. So they sign up and it's a, they set their own pace to complete the program. But these are also available through our website for our adult head along with Ed2Go to sign up for these. So that's just kind of a little snapshot about curriculum and the types of pathways that we offer training in. The next slide shows some information about the career and technical student organizations that we have running here at Southwest Tech that go hand in hand with our programs. We have four CTSO, which is again Career and Technical Student Organization. Four currently running, Future Business Leaders of America, also known as FBLA. Pro Start, Skills USA, and Health Occupation Students of America, also known as HOSA. These CTSOs provide opportunities for these students to compete in their professions. So they go to state competitions, they go to national competitions if they've won an award at the state level. They allow them to go to trainings, they get leadership training opportunities. They have opportunities to meet with other individuals, other students their age, their peers. Not always throughout state Vermont, but if they go to nationals throughout the US or in some cases international opportunities where it may be students from other countries as well. And being able to network, have some mentors that are in the field, learn from them, and get some trainings. So the CTSOs are a component that we offer our students in our programs. And again, by allowing for our teachers to then take on these roles as sort of the mentors or leaders of these CTSOs. These are opportunities these students have. And I know from experience that FBLA doesn't end at high schools. FBLA, for example, was an organization that they offer a chapter at the college level. And I participated at the college level. And it's also a chapter that they have for those outside of college. So these organizations are something these students can continue with that also offer in some cases college scholarships as well. So great opportunities that we help support here. We also have the National Technical Honor Society for our students. And there are high standards in order for these students to be recommended for the National Technical Honor Society. And those who attended our awards banquet last year, these are the students who became members of the National Technical Honor Society last year. And you can see the large number of students that are on stage that were present for that awards ceremony. Again, it represents the type of students and the hard work that they do here, the dedication that they have to the programs and the training that we're providing, and the dedication that our teachers and parents have to work with these students so they excel at a level where they can be members of the National Technical Honor Society. All of this, again, is supported by our budget and the programs that we offer here at Southwest Tech. After meeting with the Finance Committee, we are bringing before the full board a proposed budget of $4,817,556. It is a budget change of an increase of 9.89%. I will explain on the next slide some factors. For information purposes, I've also provided on this slide our current budget for this year, which is 4.3 million that you can see there. So again, I'm asking for the full board's support. And I think we'll give you the information about our budget that we would like to bring forward for the community of $4,817,556. On the next slide, and again, I'll leave an opportunity at the end to answer any particular questions anyone has. But if there's something that's really pressing, feel free to stop me and I'll be glad to refresh your question now if you need to. Otherwise, I will also offer an opportunity at the end. So with this proposed budget that we bring before the full board, to understand what is built into this budget, there is a health insurance increase proposed before the state. And to just clarify, we do not control how much we have to pay for the health insurance as an employer. It is negotiated outside of here. We are told what the rate is. It is, again, something that we don't have flexibility in changing. And there's a proposed increase brought before the state of a 16.4% increase in the health insurance rates. On the employer's side, and this increase is just the employer's side, that would mean an approximate increase of $83,700 added to the budget beyond what we currently pay. Currently negotiations are ongoing, as the community and this board knows, between teachers and our ESP units. These are contract negotiations between these bargaining units. And it's ongoing and currently it's approximately a hundred and $10,000 increase to the budget. Again, it's an ongoing negotiation, so there's not much more I can speak to on that at this point. The Vermont State Teacher OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and the Vermont State Teacher OPEB payment increase, which is a mandatory increase, will, it's estimated at an increase of $19,224. Again, it's an other post-employment benefit that helps subsidize the teacher's retirement healthcare plan. And it's a payment that since July of 20, and I don't have the year right in front of me. I want to say 2016, 2015. It was put into the legislature to help support the ongoing cost of the post-retirement benefit for health insurance. Right now, it's estimated at an increase of $19,224. Reason I use the word estimate is I don't even have this year's bill yet. So it's using last year's number and looking at annually those up about 2%. So that estimate would be an increase. And also adding on new teachers to our Vermont teacher community would increase to approximately $19,224 to the budget. An increase in the Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System on the employer's side. That increase on the employer's side would result in a $5,000 increase. The new Act 76, which is an employer childcare payroll tax that as an employer, we will have to pay based on our payroll for the year. It is an employer tax that would be paid to approximately $10,200. Again, I say approximately, it's based on our payroll. So if our payroll changes, if somebody ends up doing some overtime and our payroll increases, that payroll tax dollar amount will increase. But based on what I currently foresee our payroll to be, it would be an increase in $10,200. And of course, as we all are experiencing inflation, which will result in increased operating costs, including necessary supplies for CTE classes and CTE, again, Career and Technical Education classes. And I can't put a dollar amount on that, that varies. Some programs, it affects them more dramatically than others. I can't obviously pinpoint exactly what that dollar amount would equate to. But it is a factor in considering what we're proposing before this board. The next slide. To figure out our announced tuition based on our FY 25 budget, I need to include, or I need to. I guess mine are not awarded, my slide is not awarded. I need to include what our six semester FTE average will be. And based on the six semester FTE counts over the last three years, our FTE six semester rolling average would be 151.33. That's an estimate. I won't receive the final number from the state until middle of December. But based on the data that we submit to the state, that they are signed off by our sending schools, I'm very confident with this estimate of 151.33. That number I used in developing what would be our announced tuition because this six semester rolling average helps determine what our announced tuition needs to be. To help people in the community, if they were to look at this, understand what an FTE, a full-time equivalent is. One FTE is someone enrolled for a total of 240 minutes per day. To make up one FTE here at our tech center, it usually is the equivalent of two full-time program students. So a program student enrolled in auto and a program student enrolled in cosmetology for their second year. One student in each of those would equal, so you have two students would equal one FTE. If we took the students that are enrolled in our intro classes, our pre-tech foundation classes, it would take four students enrolled in intro classes to equal one FTE. Just so that people understand that, 151.33 is an FTE, not student enrollment. It's not our number of students, it's an FTE count. And it's a six semester average. Using that number helps us to develop what our announced tuition would be. And that leads me to the next slide. We are proposing an announced tuition of $26,875 for FY 25. I'm showing a comparison to what this current announced tuition is, $24,470. The dollar change is $2,405 increase. So it's an increase again of $2,405. What that means is explained a little better in the next slide. If we announce our tuition, and I'm asking for the full board's support moving forward with announcing our tuition as $26,875, what that means, we would get per FTE, a general state support grant on behalf of $11,365 per FTE. That comes out of that or takes away from our announced tuition because it's paid on behalf. And then we would get a supplemental assistance grant of $4,572 per FTE. So again, that comes out of that announced tuition or taking away from that announced tuition to result in a tuition amount that we would say per FTE Vermont student, the tuition in reality would be $10,938 per Vermont FTE. Again, full-time equivalent, that's not per student, that's per FTE. That is an increase of $1,719. Let's break that down to what it would mean for one student enrolled in a Vermont, in our Southwest Tech Vermont program. A Vermont student enrolled in a program all year, one student, the cost that we would charge to sending school would be $5,469. The increase between this year and next year with this announced tuition amount, the increase for one student would equate to $8,500, not $8,000, I'm sorry, $859. That's the increase that we're asking for with an announced tuition of $26,875. So that's one, that's a local cost to a sending school for one program student. Next slide. So before we go to next steps, I'm opening up the floor to the school for the regional governing board. If there are any questions from any members of the board regarding what's proposed.
Little question over here regards. The list of towns on the bottom here, I see Housit is not mentioned. Is that because it's not Vermont?
Yes. So the, yes. Southwest Vermont, Housit Falls is in New York. So when it talks about the budget, it's supplemental or on behalf payments and state payments. They, they are not included as far as getting that assistance in reducing the amount, any announced tuition that we put there, such as the $26,875. Unfortunately, at this point, Housit Falls would be charged that whole amount. So in the list with, when I started talking about the on behalf, I felt that it was only fair that we, I want to be transparent that they don't receive that assistance. So that's why they're not mentioned. They're not part of our sending schools per se. We open up and allow them to come in and we serve them. But as far as what our region is, they are not part of our technical region. I would like if you could answer it a little clearer.
Yeah, sure. It's part of our budget proposal to the board and the community. We don't, we don't include the Housit Falls. There are partners below ours, you saw on the very first page, they're logo Panther, Panther Pride. But they're not considered part of our sending district. We consider them part of our sending district, but for state purposes, they, they are not as part of how they, how they are tuitioned. So that's why they're left off the list down on the bottom. We didn't want to confuse any Vermont taxpayers. Conclusive, excuse me, conclusive with the Housit Falls pushing thing because they're very different. Excellent, thank you.
But we are very proud of them being part of our school and that's why we included them at the beginning.
Absolutely.
Because they certainly are an asset to the classroom. So we support them and you can stay with us.
I agree, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, we have, we need two motions here, one with the budget, one with the announced tuition.
Be happy to make, would you like two or one?
One at a time.
One at a time, okay. I will make the motion to approve the FY budget of $4,817,556 that Rebecca has presented.
I'll second it.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussions on that? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the proposed budget? Raise your hand, aye.
Aye.
Any no's, tensions? Saying none, okay. Now we get another motion on the announced tuition.
I'll make a motion to approve the announced tuition at $26,875.
Rebecca.
Fran, I'll second it. Any discussion questions on this? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Becky.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank all of you for this support.
Okay, now, as Asher mentioned before, this committee worked in the last month on these three new policies. They're not new, excuse me, they're updated. One on sexual harassment, one on grievance procedure, and one on conflict of interest in hiring. And just to make it clear to the public, we're not adopting these, we're warning these. And if anybody has any questions on either, any of these policies, you're welcome to contact any board member and have their concerns heard. They can come to our next meeting before we vote next month to adopt these policies. Okay, can we have a motion then? I'll just put all three together. Okay, can we have a motion that, I'll just put all three together here, to adopt these, warn, excuse me, these three policies?
Go.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion second to warn these three adjusted policies. Any questions on it? Say no, all in favor of warning these policies?
Aye.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Actually, I guess it's still afternoon, I actually put afternoon. I'd like to thank the board for their support for our FY25 budget. I'd also like to thank Rebecca for her hard work on bringing the budget. That is, we feel it's been responsible and does not cut into student learning or any of our programs. As you saw, there are many of them. Costs are out of our control and thank you for understanding that. So first off, I'd like to let you know what's been going on here in the last few weeks. We are starting recruiting season already. It may seem early to folks, but December, January, February recruiting seasons for us. Last week, we toured through 204 eighth graders in the course of two days. That's a lot of students to come through. And we've been doing eighth grade tours for many, many years and they are always well-received. The instructors, some of them said it's their best day of the year when they come down to the tech center and see what's going on here. The students have a fantastic time. I want to acknowledge that's a lot of work for our teachers to have groups come through in and out, in and out for two days and interrupt their programs and our student learning. We know how important it is for our future students in order to have an understanding of what's here at the tech center. Those were just MAU HS, excuse me, MAUMS students that came down. BB and Arlington will be here in April, they chose to come, sorry, I meant you.
We also had Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we acknowledge these events are tiresome and difficult, but they're really important to do. And it really is a highlight of the students, the students that they see the talent equipment in the shop and the kitchen and seeing what's going on, it's really, it's really fun. So I just wanted to bring that up. I'm also, I've got a few screen shares here, so give me a second, I was getting them up. I'd like to present our first spotlight student of the month, you can't see it on my screen, so, which is Kendall Garner from Med Professions. I know I spoke with you at our last board meeting and said he's going to be starting up soon. And they in fact are, they are published in the News Guide. If you, you can get them for free all over. You can also subscribe online, vermontnewsguide.com, you get a free subscription and I'll send them to your email every Sunday morning and you can flip through them. You will see these weekly along with a staff spotlight as well, but I wanted to spotlight tonight Kendall Garner from MAU HS's Med Professions program. And again, you'll see that in the News Guide. And students are really looking forward to seeing these, the staff is looking forward to seeing them, I know that the community does as well. We receive a lot of, a lot of feedback from these, particularly when people don't see them in the news guide, they wonder where they are. So it takes a lot of work to co-lead these because these are weekly publications and there's very few days in between publication deadlines. And so Nicole, who's our outreach coordinator, puts these together each week. We try to select students that highlight the best of our programs and what they're doing in their programs. I'd also like to, you will indulge me for a second, if you share on our screen here. I'd like to announce publicly, because this was asked last time, the opening of a public for Bistro 1761, which is our culinary programs restaurant. And I want to share with you a sample menu. As someone commented, they're not just hamburgers and french fries. Our students put together these menus each week. The bistro is open on Thursdays and Fridays from 10:30 to 12:30. This was a menu from, from last week to give you an idea, things like buttered nut squash bisque, Vermont cheese, charcuterie salads, smash burgers, roasted salmon, steak, chicken parmesan, desserts like salted caramel, maple cream brulee, et cetera. They're pretty extensive menus. And these menus are a collaboration of our graphic design program and our culinary program. So culinary develops the menu for the week and gets shipped out to graphic arts to do the design, so those students are involved. I know in a presentation a few months ago, Chef Nick talked about the name of 1761 Bistro. The students in the graphic design program were given an assignment to come up with multiple logos and designs for names for the bistro, which then were presented to the school administration and the students in the program. And we ultimately land on the 1761 Bistro. So that is the official name, you'll see it on their, on the chest, on their jackets like we have here for Southwest Tech. And I do want to make a note, this is open to the public again, Thursdays and Fridays, 10:30 to 12:30. If you are coming into the restaurant to sit down, you need to have reservations because we have limited seating. And you need to call 445-4934. Again, that's 445-4934 to make reservations earlier in the week if you're going to come do a sit-down menu. There's also a takeout menu each week as well, where you can come in and do an all-of-part menu, which is different than the sit-down menu. So if you're coming into the restaurant for a sit-down, you have a traditional restaurant experience where you sit down, place your order with students, that will be sent to the kitchen through a new ticketing system and students will, will serve you just as a restaurant. The takeout option is that you come in, drink yourself, take out containers and go on your way. You can check out the menu weekly on our Facebook page, Southwest Tech, just do a quick search on Facebook for that. And you'll see that. So I just want to reiterate like what a, what a complicated effort this is each week to do. If you think about this, I'm going to stop my share for a second. We have our students on average of two hours a day, that's it. And to put a, to put a, our students aren't just cooking in the kitchen, they have a curriculum that must follow, industry certifications they must receive, et cetera. So I still say how the chef pulls this off, obviously, I have no idea. I think there's a secret batch of workers somewhere that we're not aware of, but if you've not had the food here at Southwest Tech, it is fantastic. I've never had a bad meal there. If you've been to a meeting anytime soon, we usually serve you food from culinary, just not today, these treats that are not from culinary. Thank you Sandy for bringing them in, so.
He didn't cook either.
So that's, that's really what I had to report tonight, I wasn't sure how long it was going to take for our budget presentation, I know it's a lot to digest. But we, again, there's a lot of great things going on here at Southwest Tech. And if you're interested in tour for the community, please contact the main office and we are happy to bring you through, which are happy here in our building on a daily basis. Happy to take any questions.
Very cool. At some point, will there be other hours that the restaurant operates as there's been any talk for extending the restaurant's availability?
So not, not for this year at this time, it's based on student schedules, Asher. So that's the time that we can accommodate, accommodate the most number of people based on women students, because it's about, it's about the student experience. So we know it's limited time. And for those who don't work in a school, 10:30 seems early for lunch, but in school time, that's, that's the first lunch of the day, around 10 o'clock, 10:15, 10:30 in the morning, so.
Did you want to mention which class does the early one and what class does the second one?
Maggie, did you say that?
So the early, let me think.
His schedule's different than what else, it's a little confusing.
So the culinary one students are with him in the afternoon, so that's fifth and sixth block. And then the culinary arts two and three students are with him from 10 to 12. And then culinary one is 12 to 2. And then he has his pre-tech foundation students from 7:50 to 8:50 in the morning. Didn't you mention that one does takeout and one does restaurant?
They're, they're at the same time. You even do takeout or sit down in the, in the restaurant.
And I just wanted to say, it actually is extended in previous years, we only had one day of serving. So really, he's managed to add in a second day of being able to have take reservations, so I don't know how.
That's a good point for that one, I used to do one day a week, that's two, right? Anything else we can, we can answer for the board?
No, I think it's really cool.
Thank you.
Okay, all I want to, the chair report is thank Becky again for all her hard work on this budget. I know it seemed like a high budget, but our hands are tied with a lot of fixed costs that we have no control over. So I hope we can get the support of all our local towns for this budget and march. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in, is anybody have anything else?
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Happy October.
Motion adjourned. Okay, second. Second, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.